I'd like to call this meeting of the Ellsworth Planning Board to order. July 6, 2016, until after 7:00 p.m. If we could introduce ourselves.
I'm Darrell Wilson.
John Fink.
Jim Markhouse.
Roger Lucero.
Thank you. First item of business is the adoption of the minutes from the June 1 meeting. Does anyone have a motion regarding the minutes, please?
I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes as written.
Is there any discussion, corrections, or additions? Oh, is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
In that case, all in favor of the minutes, please? Thank you. Next item of business is modification to an approved but lapsed 2012 major use site development plan and minor subdivision approved in 2012 but unrecorded and with a modification titled "Store Modifications," July 2016, for Ellsworth Investments LLC. The proposal is to have the proposed 9,000-square-foot addition detached from, instead of attached to, the existing Martins Tractor Supply Building on an 18.7-acre property at 461 High Street, tax map 11, Lot 4, in the commercial zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Good evening. I'm Gina Detour from Carpenter Associates. We are the consulting engineer, engineering firm representing Ellsworth Investments LLC. On May 4 of this year, the planning board approved our application to construct the 9,000-square-foot retail building near the Martins and Tractor Supply store. What we failed to do is record the subdivision plan with the registry of deeds, which is why we are here tonight. Since our last meeting, we have received the DEP approval for the modified site location of development plan. And I do have my LARS.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, I know you're asking per waiver because of the stormwater. They originally have, can we have a copy of that, or was that way back when they owned Walmart? I mean, when Walmart did it?
When Walmart did it. And that's...
Yeah, you don't have a copy, or?
That's the DEP.
That's it? Just that?
And I can leave copies with everybody?
I think, I think it's in there.
You see it already?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wonder if there's anything else recorded.
So, may I say something? You missed the last meeting, right?
Yes, I did.
Because you had an obligation.
Right.
So, the, what happened is that we recommended to the board not, this project has been approved as presented.
Right.
Okay. So you, okay. Okay, so we recommended that the project not be signed because they were modifying something that technically did not exist in the registry deed. So now, we're just trying to correct that, that it's the same project that you had reviewed.
Okay.
With the same, it's exact same thing that the board approved two months ago.
But I noticed we never approved those ECL, I mean, the waivers for the stormwater.
Those, the waivers were approved, the, the thing that was missing is...
On the, on the MARS.
Correct. They weren't listed correctly.
Right.
What was waived and what was conditionally approved.
Right.
And they also corrected that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, has been corrected.
And you're building on asphalt, right? So it's going to be, you're building on pervious, and so the group is still going to be the same thing? Okay.
Correct.
Got you.
And there was one small thing that was changed, it's so tiny, it's that there was a hydrant that is likely to be covered over when they do the building, and they hadn't really specified that they were going to move it, but now it's clearly specified we're moving the hydrant. But it was alluded that they were going to move it. So it's really, it's a complete technicality.
Let me ask you, we have a fire department anyways.
It's clarification. Correct.
Wouldn't it have been easier if the hydrant were in the building, then you could remotely open it and not have to come?
Protected from the...
It would be a special sprinkler head.
Yeah.
They don't make them yet.
Any other questions from the board? I'm, I'm not looking at you because...
I, I guess the only thing that I would like to make clear on the plan, that the waiver for stormwater is a waiver for producing the stormwater calculations as part of the submission materials, Article 10, Section 1002. The project is still subject to stormwater standards. So we are not waiving stormwater. We are waiving submission materials because we have everything we need. Is that agreeable?
Well, the minutes, what did the minutes say? Because we had the applicant, basically, the minutes from two months ago.
Yeah, I didn't have a copy of those.
I have them upstairs, obviously.
To refer to.
Do you want me to go get them?
Well, is it incorrect to say that what the waiver is, is, is a waiver...
From the submittal.
Producing stormwater calculation, submission materials, Article 10, Section 1002. Those are the submission materials. That's the waiver. If you read the plan, it just says stormwater. We're not waiving stormwater in its entirety, right? This site is still subject to, and it's our assertion that they meet all that because the existing system is already done and designed, and that the EP letter says that.
Correct. To be honest with you, Frank, is, I, I was in hopes that we, we had the applicant list the waiver and condition per the minutes that were approved when this project was approved. We did not specify that language because I believe that that wasn't specified in the minutes.
Okay.
So, and I was in hopes that this was, this MyLAR were going to be signed, so if you change the waiver provision, then they have to bring us new MyLARs, and they cannot be signed tonight.
I would suggest that since nothing has changed since the project was originally done by Walmart, and at that time, the stormwater plans were deemed sufficient, that any risk of it being otherwise is minimal.
So it's appropriate to just say stormwater waiver?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're not changing anything on site.
In addition to that, they're attached to this DEP, basically, contract, if you want. As you can tell, because there was a change, they had to amend that DEP, what is it called again? It's a consent, is it?
A mana.
Excuse me?
License.
License. So really, it's not, it's not like they don't have stormwater.
Okay.
Management. It's clear, it's encumbered.
We, that's in the package, right?
No, this came after the package was submitted, the DEP information.
Okay.
Now, so if you had, I've read some places with 57% impervious now. That hasn't changed, right? So it's still going to be 57 impervious?
Correct.
Okay.
There won't concern more water. So the system we know is working, so.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this matter may. I ask that before you speak, you be recognized by the chair and go to the lectern, state your name for the record, and tell us your concern or comment or question. Does anyone wish to speak? Hearing seeing nobody, public hearing is closed. What would the board like to do?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to this modification, major site use development plan and minor subdivision, I just want to make two motions. The first one is that, that we, that we find this is, as before, an allowed use in this zone, and that the application is complete with the inclusion of the letter of, from DEP redefining what it redefines. So that would be the first motion, that it's complete.
Okay.
Do you want to vote on that, or should I?
Why don't we just vote on that?
Okay.
Any, is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of completeness, please? Thank you.
So, with regard to this modification, major site use development plan and minor subdivision, approved and unrecorded with a modification, we find that the... Give me just a second. With regard to the, to the modifications, it meets the standards of Section 607 and the subdivision ordinance, and that the waivers that we've discussed, recorded on the MyLAR to include, as shown, stormwater, and a second requirement that the lighting plan for the specific building area be approved by the code enforcement officer as detailed in the And that we approve the project.
Is there, is, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please? Okay. Sorry you were here so briefly. We enjoy your company.
Did the city feel like we missed anything?
I, I was just going to suggest that it would have been prudent to refer to the previous, because a subdivision is supposed to have two meetings. Your first meeting really technically was the one that was in 2012. It would have been prudent to kind of refer to 2012 in the, in the previous approval that you did two months ago, but...
Because I did a completeness motion.
I know, I heard, yeah. I think it'll be okay. This is not...
Also, you could include this with the records.
Beautiful thing, yeah. Thank you for the artwork compliment.
You are, of course, welcome to stay for the whole meeting. Yes, I do. But I bet you couldn't bill for it.
Could you make sure that Michelle has a copy of it, please?
We have a copy. It's already filed. Code does well.
Okay, good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item of business is a preliminary plan for a major use site development plan and major subdivision entitled Tracy Building for William Sandborn. The proposal is to subdivide the existing building located on the 10,250 square-foot lot at 142 Main Street, tax map 136, Lot 198, to five commercial units in the downtown zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
I am. I'm Sam Morse.
Go ahead.
What's that?
Tell us about it.
Well, we, basically, we bought the building, what, 19 years ago, because we love the building and we kind of use for it, but that use has passed, and we still want to keep the building. And we feel that it'd be better used to have smaller units for, because it's, you know, a pretty large space. We're offering, you know, reasonable size spaces and reasonable rent to smaller businesses, which I think will be helpful for downtown, and also to us.
Questions from the board?
The only question, in looking at the plan, there's a tenant space 142B, and then above it, a tenant space 142C, and then there's a rectangular space, like in the lower right-hand corner, 142C, on the plan. Is that, like, not accessible? It looks like it's closed off. I don't see a door. Is that just a feature of the building?
Can I look if I don't have that?
It was specifically that section.
Oh, that actually doesn't look like it. There's a doorway here.
Oh, okay. So that belongs to 142B?
2B, yep.
Okay, clear? Clear enough?
Originally, back in 1933, that was a little shoe store. Had its own entrance.
Oh, okay.
The upper level is, was Tracy's restaurant. The middle section was that supermarket, and then Dayton Newbury's was the, the lower section. But that little room has got its own entrance, and was a little shoe repair and sales shop.
Okay. So, so the, the doorways that you show exist now, or you've, you've removed some or rearranged them, or?
The, well, the doorways, we're going to be adding, we'll be adding...
Just the exterior doorways.
Yeah. These, that door exists, those two do. We're going to be adding this door.
Okay. And is there an existing door right here that's going to go away, or? I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm not completely familiar with the building.
No, no. There's a door, these, all the other doors are existing except for this one.
Okay.
And that's the one door we're going to put in. We need to replace those two, but...
Okay, fair enough.
That makes sense.
And the subdivision, just from reading your, your narrative, the basement is not part of the subdivision. That's another space that is going to be, what, like, common, or just storage?
Yeah, I mean, storage is not much that they can demo there because of the fire and such.
Is it, the, do the individual tenants have access to that storage, like individually, or once you're in storage, can you just get anywhere that you want down there?
One section has access, I guess the lower section, larger section, has access, and the upper section, 142C, has access, but the middle section does not.
Is it likely that the public or employees were using the lower section?
It's, there's a, so far, nobody's...
I'm just asking because of...
That I've talked to.
John, you mean the basement?
Yeah.
Oh, the basement, not the lowers?
Yeah. Right. I'd say that's it.
I'm asking because of questions about access for people with disabilities. Is that, who in the city has purview over that?
Technically, it's the State Fire Marshal's office and our office, but to my knowledge, then what we discussed is no planned use of the public being down there.
Yeah. For employees?
Well, it depends if, if the...
Yeah.
People who are leasing the property have storage down there. Someone's going to have to go down there, so I would assume it would be employees.
Leave that for the proper authorities.
Okay.
So it says sprinkler room? There's going to be a sprinkler room in basement?
There is already a sprinkler room.
That's what it said?
Oh, yeah.
What about you guys? You've got no problems with that?
I'm, I'm okay. Did the city have anything else that they wanted to?
You could have made this a little more complicated for us, and we feel that we've really done something.
Sorry.
Perhaps the public would have a chance to comment.
Okay. Does any member of the public have anything to say on this matter? No, they're not going to.
I, I do want to say, Mr. Chairman, that in, since I've been working for the city, this is the first person that has been, has pulled this together all by themselves. Of course, they want, they need the stamp of an architect and engineer, and who got that, but really, that's, that's, that's a big...
So we can hold him up in the future.
No, he should celebrate his abilities.
Well, you guys are very helpful. All you guys, I've spent a long time talking with them. They, they've been great.
I keep telling them they fail bureaucracy 101.
That's a good thing.
So is there a motion to be made, perhaps?
I, Mr. Chairman, I, I make a motion for the preliminary plan for the major use site development plan and major subdivision titled Tracy Building. This proposal to subdivide the existing building into five commercial units in the downtown zone, because of the nature of the project, I, the major site use development plan, the exclusions that apply here, once we take those into account, and the subdivision of an existing structure, I make a motion that we find this complete, and that, I want to say this is an allowed use, but it's the uses that will come in, will conform with the whatever zoning exists that they need to comply with. So it is an allowed use, and the application is complete.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please?
I guess the only comment I would have for the applicant, so he's going to be here for final, right? Just maybe add that doorway?
Oh, yeah.
The interior doorway, just to document that. I feel like everything else is in place, because there's so much of the ordinance that doesn't apply because of the existing structure being subdivided like that.
I don't have any other comment for you for final plan.
Okay, great.
You already got three tenants, huh?
What's that?
You already got three tenants, huh?
I've got two tenants.
Yeah, two?
Yeah. But I've got, I've had a lot of interest, even just last week.
Yeah, it's a great building.
Yeah, that's why we bought it, because we love the building.
Yeah, looking forward to some interesting things in there. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item of business is a preliminary plan for a major use site development plan entitled Building 250 Ellsworth Expansion Project for the Jackson Laboratory. The proposal is to construct a 32,000-square-foot shell addition, install underground fuel storage tanks, and upgrade and expand underground electrical and telecommunications services on a 17.71-acre property with 21 Kingsland Crossing, tax map 16, Lot 2, in the commercial zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Good evening. Jonathan Patrick from the Jackson Laboratory.
I'm Sarah Nicholson from Woodard and Harden.
So, tell us what you're here for.
So, what we're here for is, and just to give a little bit of history, Jackson acquired the parcel in 2012 with the anticipation that someday down the road, it would be a great place to expand our mouse production business. While we, while we purchased it, we were fitting out a facility very similar in size and orientation and operation in Sacramento, California, with the hopes that that would be a 10- or 15-year expansion plan, and then we wouldn't need to move into Ellsworth, probably until 2020, 2021. The good news is, there's a huge demand worldwide for our house models. We filled a California facility in 2009, filled it in 2000, 2012. We opened it in 2009. We're past the point now where we will be able to sustain sales to our clients at the current growth rate if we don't expand our production capacity by early 2018. What we are here proposing now is that we expand the existing structure by 32,000 square feet, which allows to get a jump start on the installation of the superstructure, of the underground utilities, all the things that are described in the application, simply as an expansion of the existing footprint, not a change in use. And as we outlined the last time you appeared before the board, we will be coming back later this year to amend for a second, second approval request for change in use, and then to display the entire plan for facade, lighting, parking, water, all the other things that would be required to get full planning approval for the expansion of this facility. Sarah, I don't know if there's anything you want to add, scope wise?
Okay, they're ready for questions.
Yeah. Now, you're planning just the, the shell of the building in phase one, is that what was mentioned?
Superstructure and shell only.
Does not look like he's going to discuss this.
I'm just curious about the underground fuel tanks. We, apparently, the ordinance covers above-ground fuel tanks. Are there any requirements for that storage, as far as...
This would be all in DEP standards.
These are, these are buried, like, like a gas station would be, probably, just in the dirt and access ports. Okay.
Are they LP, are they LP tanks, or oil?
One of each.
One of each, okay. So one needs a permit, one does not?
The oil tank, they both need to meet standards. The oil tank is the one that needs to go through the...
How big are they in size?
Between 30,000 and 40,000 gallons each.
I know this has nothing to do with, it definitely is a pool, but are you going to use any other thing, like solar or anything like that? You have plans for that? Just curious.
We're, we are making provisions in the utility plant, potentially down the road to put in a biomass boiler, similar to what we put in in Bar Harbor, we're in wood pellets. Right now, the cost of number two oil and the cost of propane are more competitive than wood pellets are, and the cost of the wood pellet boiler is about two and a half times what it would cost to put in a propane boiler. So we've reserved the space in case that, that fuel cost changes, and we can arbitrage fuels back and forth, but we're not looking at anything else at this point in time. Solar, the state name, just hasn't met the economic tipping point where it's, where it's viable.
So it's basically just going to be a power plant? What you're going to do now, right?
The 32,000-square-foot expansion is for generator plant, boiler plant, chiller plant, fire sprinkler entrance, electrical entrance and, and distribution center, medicated water for the ML rooms, and a small empty investor fuel office space on the second
Darrell, just for the record, the city does on their 807 have a restriction for the placement and sales of fuel, and it's, it's 300 feet from India budding residential property line. So it's where gasoline and/or diesel fuel are to be stored or sold, and it needs the 300 feet, so it's not like it's a...
Okay.
But there is something, anyone else that just wanted to say there is something in the...
This is undergone state fire marshal review?
Has it undergone state fire marshal review?
Is it required to, as they...
I don't believe, I don't believe underground fuel comes under that.
I mean, any, any part of this project?
Construction, the construction portion, the underground fuel stuff.
No, no, I was thinking of the construction. Okay.
You, you mentioned change of use. Were you referring to change of use with regard to our zoning ordinance, or just change of use from the building as it is to what you're going to turn it into?
As it is to what we're going to turn it into. That would come as part of the phase two application.
So it, thank you. It seems to me like in the commercial zone, laboratory research and development facility knocks that, right?
Clearly allowed, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. The only other question I had was sort of the state of, of the stormwater system. You purchased the property, is, what, what sort of maintenance are you currently, you know, doing with that, the existing stormwater that's being used, and you're, you're going to maintain that until you come back to us with a more comprehensive plan?
Right. And we, we talked about this at the last GRT meeting, that we would provide as part of phase two, a full evaluation of the systems and, you know, update and revise maintenance plans.
So I guess my question is, between now and then, what, what is the state of stormwater on that property?
There are two ponds, one of which serves just this property, the, the building, and the other of which serves the parking area... and the other of which serves the parking area and the, as well as the rest of the subdivision. So, that one is, that's the easement one that's maintained by the group. So, Jackson's responsibility for one pond, and then there's shared responsibility for the other.
So, in the intervening years, then, since Loews is gone, I mean, clearly that shared pond has been maintained. The one, the one that's on your property that's yours solely, it doesn't need to be dredged, or is it in?
It's, it's a roof runoff, so it's, it's pretty low use. But to be honest, I haven't investigated it personally. I don't know if you guys...
We haven't, we, before we purchased it, we went through...
Due diligence.
Yeah, due diligence report, and things were working fine then. We have not inspected it annually since we acquired it. We certainly will before we invest $140 million into the structure that it's connected to. But we have not since then.
What a great headline.
What's that?
Multi-million dollar project stalled because of shallow pond.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want that headline.
When these were constructed, we did not ask for ma, we weren't a salary, yes, we are today. So, I think that it's, we've had a really good discussion, and they're very interested in making sure that it works properly. And we're gonna make sure that it has maintenance agreement and inspection like any other ponds.
Right, I understand what it gets to phase two. I'm just curious, the way, what do you think the state...
These ponds, first, it hasn't been built to capacity yet, so they're still underutilized anyway.
Okay, right.
At least two lots that haven't been developed. And those, if that's how Michelle said, we did not also require a requirement for quality. So, these are just retention ponds, there's no underwriting or anything like that. We've never had any issues with them since they were built. And I don't anticipate it would, because they were all built. They would even probably meet the standards we have for the 5.4 inches for the...
Okay, so they're not as sensitive to maintenance because of the, we're not treating the...
Because of the ongoing maintenance, there's really no maintenance you have to do to the bed of that pond.
Oh, okay, right, sure.
As long as it's...
You just keep the trees out, things like that.
You know, the good thing is with Jackson Lab coming, these ponds will be maintained from now on. It's gonna be an improvement to what it was there. So, it's, that, from that standpoint, it's pretty good.
Yeah, I just wanna be comfortable, you know, sort of waiving that part of your requirement for now.
Well, that may not status quo, they're not adding anything to it, so...
I'm good with that.
Public like to say a few words?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sure. Do you suppose? Are you anxious to make a motion?
No, no.
Eager, eager.
This is a public hearing? Does anyone wish to comment upon this? No one wishes to comment? You're free to.
To get back to work?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, with regard to the preliminary plan for a major use site development plan titled Building 250 Ellsworth Expansion Project for the Jackson Laboratory, the proposal to construct 32,000 square feet shall addition install underground fuel storage tanks, upgrade, expand underground electrical and telecom services on a 17.71-acre property, 21 Kingsland Crossing, tax map Lot 162 in the commercial zone. We find that this is an allowed use in the zone. And that due to the nature of these modifications, and referring to the applicant's delineation of areas that appear to need to be reviewed as part of the major site use plan, we agree with the sections that you have shown that it, that don't need to be part of this consideration. There are several tables in your application that show areas that are part of this, that don't need, to be part of this review, and we agree with all of that, deferring them to phase-two. So, taking those into consideration, we find the application is complete.
Is there a second? I'll second. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I think it would be hubris after, tonight before we go to final, have a site visit.
Okay. Michelle, can you arrange that?
So, um...
This will need to have notice on the paper and all that.
Well, I was just thinking if we could, do we have time and energy to set a date tonight so we don't have to re-advertise? I would probably reset notices and that butters anyways, but I may not mean the newspaper. I mean, I still would do everything to let people know. Or if we don't set a date tonight, then we adjourn, then I have to, it takes more time.
Can I make a comment on that? I mean, I understand that we could go look at what they're proposing to do. My opinion is that, once we get a phase-two plan that includes lighting, landscaping, like, you know, very detailed stuff, I mean, that's when I would like to go see the markers of, you know, where things are gonna go.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, as long as we go before the second phase comes through.
And I, I would like them to give a, get a chance to, you know, detail phase-two out, you know, the way that they want to.
So...
That would be my only comment.
Okay, so if we did, if you decided to wait for phase-two, would you like to do it? So, you get the material, and we do a meeting before the, I mean, a site visit before the first meeting? Would you like to do a site visit between the first and the second meeting? Which is, that way gives me, you're all here, it gives me ideas of what...
Can I just interrupt? Can we, this is not part of the motion that's on the table. Can we just dispose of that first?
Okay, we can, okay, yeah.
Now, we have the proposal, I guess, just one of a second, this, yeah?
You did.
You did.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, all who, all in favor of the completeness? Thank you. Now, let's talk about the site visit.
To be more efficient. Now, you know, if you don't, if you all agree not having a site visit for this phase, then we can, I can contact you, and we can discuss that at a later time and have more time to figure this out.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, so we have one, that's all I can do.
Okay.
I guess for the, for the final plan approval, I had an additional question. And it's gonna take me a second to find it.
So, you're talking for phase-two, Daryl?
No, for the...
Oh, okay.
This is complete, and then we're gonna go to final plan?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking for what I'm looking for, and if I knew what it was, oh, um... Performance guarantees, what section is that?
Oh, in the ordinance?
Yeah, is it, is it, is it in six?
Under...
Oh, maybe I should just look at the index, huh?
That would be under six. Yeah, it's, you're gonna have to find it.
Let me just look at the index and see if I...
Actually, it's under six. Oh, I know where it is. Oopsie. It may be under section two as well.
What criteria, performance standards?
It's called Performance Guarantees, I think.
Yes, 606.4, 606.4, mm, no. Nope.
And the, and the question is, 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 once we find that, has that been discussed in any way?
We actually haven't discussed that, Daryl.
And is that something that they would include in their final plan?
I, I think it's staff...
It's under 210.
210, Performance Guarantees, bingo. 'Cause there were like five options there, and I was just wondering if there was any...
What value it has in the 32 years I've been doing code work, and I've never done it, because I think we mentioned at the last meeting that the city has the option over the title 17, those nuisance and dangerous buildings. So, are you talking in reference that they walked out of the project and left something half abandoned that wasn't safe and secure?
What I was interested in, and this was the idea, you guys just, you know, redirect me here, but if the project gets started, it goes through this phase-one, gets complete to where, you know, they've done what they're gonna do, I mean, clearly, and, and then something happens, you know, God forbid. But things like, I mean, clearly, the stormwater system is probably set up to deal with whatever happens there. You know, perhaps the lighting, the, you know, any landscaping. So, the next owner that comes in, say, ownership transfers, and, you know, Jackson Labs disappears completely off the face of the earth, is there something that the next person can tap into to say, "Well, I'm gonna finish the lighting now," or "I'm gonna finish the grading," or "I'm gonna finish," you know, whatever didn't get completed that was intended for phase-two, like, all this stuff that we just waived? The next person that comes in, can they pick up the project? Or are they so far behind because we waived all that stuff?
That would probably be a question, Michelle. I think they would have to reply and meet those standards. Because permits, permits are not transferable. You can't pull a permit, half-bill the house, and John buys and finishes it. So, in our system, in our system, in our, it's kind of our building, so permits are not transferable.
So, the second person coming in would have to, at least to our office,
get new permits to the electrician, permits to the plumbing, permits to the builder.
But in terms of site plan review, the bill, the site will continue to meet its standards as is. I mean, we're not changing the lighting that's there in the parking lot, we're not changing, um...
Okay, so you, you feel like this expansion is not as much of an impact to what's already existing there?
Right.
That you need some sort of escrow, or bond, or assurance that if you do that, and then stop and walk away?
Well, the bill, this addition isn't gonna change, isn't gonna make the site not meet the ordinance for what it is now.
Okay.
The point was, we didn't wanna go into a full, to try to project forward to what we're gonna need based on all the other things that are gonna happen, most of which are gonna be inside. But there will be changes then to parking lots, so that's gonna affect lighting. There's gonna be changes to landscaping, so we need to submit that, but we're not prepared to do that yet.
Yeah, so those changes are...
Right, so the, so the site is, I can't think of anything that's gonna make the site not, you know, I don't mean non-conforming, but not in conformance with the ordinance when we walk away with this addition on it.
So, the city feels that it's appropriate then not to ask them to give us any...
We had a big discussion on that, and I think that, um...
Last meeting, we talked a little bit about it.
Yeah, and that's where I was...
The concerns are not, I mean, our conclusion is the concerns, as Sarah explained it, is that it really wasn't that big of a concern. In addition to that, Daryl, under 606.4, they have to provide, and I think they've provided, if I remember correctly, evidence of financial capacity to complete the project. So, we ask every applicant to give us a letter from a bank or a letter from some financial institution or wherever they have it, to show that they do have the financial ability to complete this project. And in this case, you've provided that.
Okay, I just wanna be...
Sarah? Was that in the, I believe?
Yeah, the Gantt chart, and the cost estimate, and the funding stream, all that's very clear.
I don't believe we provided a letter from a bank. We stated that the project is fully funded in this fiscal year and the cash is sitting in the treasury account.
Okay, yes. It's evidence of financial capacity to complete it, doesn't seem necessarily bad. It's for the planning board to assess.
I mean, they're two separate things, though. The one is, if, if a developer just walks away with a half-finished project, then, then that's the financial capacity thing. You've assured that you can go after them if the money's available. The other thing, which I believe you were talking about, was, does approving this project without having all the other review happen, does that leave the site? You know, even when the project is all done, does that leave the site in some way out of conformance with the ordinance? And, and we're saying, no, it does not.
Okay.
That it will still meet the, just as it does today. This is no different than just putting an addition on a building. It's the, it's the, the other changes that are coming down the road that need to be reviewed because they're, they're alterations to the site. That then you have to ensure that those alterations are, that will be in conformance, that'll be here. We'll have to show you that it does, and you'll have to agree with us.
Okay, that's fair enough, yeah, and that's kinda where I was going with it. In the, in the interest of, you know, being, being fair to all applicants. Anybody that comes to us with a two-phase plan, you know, you ask for no special treatment, and I'm gonna separate those two phases, and, and, you know, one could pass, the other one could fail.
Right, right.
So, okay, I think it answers the question.
And I think it's, I think we, we stated that where it came up, to say that, not just say this will wait till phase-two, we did say that, but also to say that it's, that these things are, you know, that there's no, the changes don't affect the appropriateness of what's there now.
Okay, good, and I think that's on the record, that's really all I wanted to...
The city manager still wish to say something?
It is very brief, but I just wanna make the point that, and your questions are all great. It's not uncommon in the economic development world for states or communities, or even commercial builders, to put up what they call shell buildings. And oftentimes, they don't fit them out. They wait to see who the end user is, and they do the fitting out. So, I, at least personally, was very comfortable with this concept, 'cause they are functionally building it out to a certain point. If somebody needed to come in and step into their shoes, you know, it's not that unusual. Obviously, they would have to meet, I better go back before you, you know, for approval, so be it. But I, I don't find this an unusual situation.
Okay, good point, right, they're putting in a lot of great improvements that the next tenant would benefit from. Okay, that was really all my, my only comment for any final plan discussion, and I think we don't have to go over that again.
So, are we ready now for item number five?
I believe that we are.
But it is our tradition to make a motion to adjourn, which is triggered then by the final signature on the milars. And we're in session until that final signature is in place. Is there a motion to adjourn under those circumstances?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.